Joanne, may I have the roll call? Oh, sorry. A roll call for Douglas Beatty.
Here.
Matthew Buckley.
Here.
Michael Haggardorn.
Here.
Ed Marin.
Here.
Christopher Michio. Crystal Palmer.
Here.
Nicole Pupor.
Here.
Mark Sand.
Here.
Colin Stone. May it be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Mark Sand, may I have a second?
A motion.
Mike Haggardorn. Any questions for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No's abstained, resolution passes. We've set aside ten minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to approach the board at this time, I kindly ask that you do so. And state your name. All right, seeing that we have no one at this time, we will move forward to presentations. We have two presentations this evening. Our first topic is our capital project, and our presenter is Jeff West.
Phil Anthony and Eric Hamlin are company captains.
What, John?
Group of moral support.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're here tonight to discuss the update on the capital project and to discuss where we expect to be when school opens. The administration was good enough to put this together for us, and based on meetings we've had a couple of times today. The the majority of the areas that we're working on will be occupiable for school to open, with the exception of the new elementary cafeteria and the larger construction hall. Those areas will lag behind. The other areas will be habitable, inhabitable, but they will not be, all the finishes will not be complete for various reasons. The life and safety issues are being taken care of in all of the areas. There's no issue with fire alarm, smoke alarm, emergency egress, anything like that. But like I say, finishes are going to be lagging behind for various reasons. Since we started the project, we knew we were in a very aggressive schedule situation. The contractors we have on board are quite experienced and able to perform. However, they lacked a little bit in what we'd like to have for work efficiency and manpower. Some of that's due to the contractors themselves, but some of it's due to the labor force that's available in the state now because there's so much work. On top of that, we've had issues with asbestos and some demolition and structural steel issues that nobody anticipated, which we've worked through. But in doing so, it takes a week or two to resolve these issues. When you only have eight weeks to take care of the work, it's quite an impact. A two-week upset, but it's 25% of the schedule, so. The site itself will be cleaned up and safe, the track. We're discussing with a track installer, meaning the running track, as well as the turf installer. They both take about three work weeks to do their tasks, and they're weather-dependent for the track surface. We've decided today that we don't want to take a chance on putting the turf in first and making the synthetic surface on the rubber track lag behind because if we get an early winter or early cold weather, we could jeopardize the installation this year. We'd have to wait until the spring thaw, which isn't a good position. So we're gonna go ahead and put the rubber synthetic track down. As soon as they're finished, we're gonna put the turf down, the synthetic turf. We expect to be done sometime in October, about the middle of October. We're trying everything we can to push it as hard as we can, but a lot of it, like I say, is weather-dependent. Part of the issue was the installer for the synthetic turf was scheduled to be here the third or fourth week of August, and now they're saying they're gonna be the first or second week of September. So what we've done was we took the sequence of operations and turned them around, put the rubber synthetic track down first, then we're gonna go ahead with the turf on top of that or after that. At the same time, the fencing and goalposts and things of that nature will be installed during that same six weeks of work. Going through the actual areas, corridors will be complete, with the exception of some finishes. Bathrooms will be usable. The cafeteria, like I said in the beginning, the cafeteria in the elementary school, we expect to be online about the second week of September, third week of September. But we just can't. We hit asbestos in there last week, week before. They're doing the abatement now, but as you probably know, when we're doing asbestos abatement in an area, it shuts down absolutely all activity in the area. So all the trades that could be working in there are no longer able to work in that immediate area until the asbestos is cleaned out. It is cleaned out now, and we're waiting for the clean air to come back, which will allow us to go back into the space and continue our work. But it's set us back a couple of weeks. Is there any specific areas or questions anyone has that they'd like to speak to?
Other question. So the track we're looking at, that's gonna go down first, correct? So that's a three-week
Yeah, the asphalt is down now, we gotta put the rubber synthetic surface on the top.
All right, so best-case scenario, obviously, I know we're weather-dependent, so three weeks, what is our timetable for that?
For the synthetic surface?
Well, what would be our done date? Just a soft done date?
They're starting the 26th, and it should be done 15 days after that.
The 26th of August, right?
Yes.
And 15 days after that?
Yeah, 15 workdays.
And so then, obviously, we're gonna protect that track so we can work on the inside of that turf field?
Absolutely.
So we're the 26th to, and that's three weeks, so that's, what did you say, the 16th of September?
Yeah, somewhere around that.
Okay, so do we have a, I'm not saying a guarantee, but do we have, do we feel good that once this track is done, we're gonna be able to start right in on this turf or not?
Yeah, my conversation's as late as four o'clock this afternoon with a turf installer was he's gonna try to get here a little bit earlier than the 16th because they run in three-week cycles still. And if we're telling them we gotta hold off for three weeks, the question that they have within their own internal organization, should they start another installation before, you know, rather than wait the three weeks with nothing to do? He's gonna get back to me tomorrow morning. I stressed to him how important it was and the position that they put the school district in. I honestly believe that he'll be here the 16th or earlier if possible. Now, it's important to note that the both installers need 15 or 16 days. For the synthetic rubber, they need 15 days for install and then two days to stripe the track. The striping can go on at the same time that the turf is being installed, but it's parallel to that. So if they have 15 days work time, it'll actually take them, they're figuring 11 or 12 days, but they're figuring there's gonna be a couple of days of rain in there where they can't work.
Okay.
So we're fairly confident.
So we're, hopefully turf is September 16th, and three weeks onto that is October, let's say 10th?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes.
We're looking at?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can we just add to the, one of the issues is part of it's a waiting game? The one part we need to talk about is we've had a subcontractor put down the tarmac on the, for the tractor underneath the track.
The asphalt.
The asphalt. Can you just talk about asphalt in the waiting period? Because the person that laid the track down, whatever surface we call the track surface, they might be able to be here earlier, but it wouldn't matter because
Yeah, they could physically be here earlier, but they have to wait a minimum of 14 days for the asphalt to off-gas and cool down. They can't cap it because the synthetic rubber actually caps it, they can't cap it until 14 days later. The 14th day is up on the 26th.
I just wanted to bring, there's a lot of variables here in love, unfortunately, it's a waiting game, as I was always saying.
I'm sure it's weather-dependent, of temperature carrying and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Now, the synthetic turf or the turf field, so three weeks, is that lined and everything ready to go?
Yes.
Kids ready?
Yeah, the last week, they're gonna be out there sewing all the, there's a lot of handwork in putting the track in for all the marks and markings and all that stuff. So they'll take them, but they are two to put the mat down, assuming the surface is acceptable. You gotta remember, the contractor, the site contractor is one contract, the turf installer is a separate contract, both hired directly by the district. So the first thing the turf installer does is come and checks the condition and the levelness of the subgrade. And if that's acceptable, within two or three days, they can have the pad down and start putting the fabric down.
How are they gonna protect the track?
I'm sorry?
How do they protect the track?
Plywood. Yep. It's done free-lonely.
And, okay, just out of curiosity, what will happen if the track is damaged?
They'll have to repair it. And they can repair it, you can't tell, we've been in that situation before, but usually they'll put either real thick plywood down or multiple layers. There's not a lot of heavy traffic going back and forth across the track. The only thing they'll have is the tractors, smaller tractors bringing in the fill.
What about the actual huge rolls of turf? That'll be where you're on there?
Yeah, they'll bring in it. It's not, point pressure is not a lot. Round pressure, plus work. It's not uncommon to do it that way.
Elementary cafeteria. So you're saying the cafeteria won't be usable for two weeks after we start, is that all right?
Yes, we're working on a finished schedule right now with a contractor.
We had a meeting today, and we made it very, very clear that we wanted an exact schedule. Their owner of the company that's here, Kit Booth, and we asked them to really sit down and give us the exact schedule on the cafeteria because while this meeting convenes them, there's a lot of work on our part now to make sure that our kids get fed, to Jen and Roxy's credit recovery, and so would Kat and other people, Dan Noonan and Josh Nolan, a whole bunch of other people. They have a plan, and we're ready to execute that plan, but we don't wanna have, we don't wanna have to do that for three weeks.
Right, right, I wasn't sure, are we gonna have it completely done, then use it, or we're gonna have something partial
We're shooting.
Get going and then go
Well, that's, that's a decision this board can make, the administration can make. My suggestion to not use it until it's fully complete, because if they start using it earlier, we're just slowing down the process of actually finishing it.
Well, let me segue over to Jen Parlin right now, tell you what we are, what we know it's gonna be, we know it's not gonna be finished, no matter what timeline I give it, no second
It's gonna be code compliance.
Well, but
Oh, yes.
Right, what we're gonna do is do how we fed the kids in previous years. So they kept the equipment, it's actually in the bus garage, and used in the multipurpose room, and Josh Nolan and Dan Noonan and Sarah, everybody's been involved with, we have to bring that equipment back up, put it in the multipurpose room, Dan and Josh would get it going, and we'd serve the kids out of the multipurpose room at that point. So we have a plan, yes, it's all.
And it's important to note that any of the spaces can't be used until the architects fill out a substantial completion certificate, which means code compliance.
And then the larger storage room?
What's the question?
The larger storage room.
Thirty feet or larger.
Yeah, that's, that's been a disaster for a lot of reasons. But right now, the schedule shows I've done about the first week of November, complete.
Some of the, some of the areas that have happened, and it was actually one of the areas that resulted in a major cost scenario, the first time out of it, are the steel and the tariffs on steel. And so now Jefferd Steel has always been a very reputable company to work with, and they're having, meeting the demand, I guess, they're having a hard time meeting our demand, getting the steel as requested here on site. So that's just one example of, of a problem. I think Bass Hatfield has had subcontractors, they have their pro, their people who handle a lot of different things, and then they have subcontractors who come in. To their credit, I guess it's to their credit, they've had subcontractors that they said this work isn't good enough, go home, right? Because we wanna have good work, not just completed work. So that's, put them in a delay situation. You can go through some other ideas. That's, we said it's disaster, these are issues that have slowed down the process.
I'd like to just chime in on the quality comment that you raised, Max. In situations like this, one of the challenges is to maintain quality and not lose that as a goal. So, you know, we could potentially accelerate contractors if we were gonna let them cut corners or take, you know, shortcuts, and we're not really recommending that at all. So there is a sacrifice on the schedule side with the importance of maintaining quality because it's forefront.
Unfortunately for Bass, the general contractor, they had a couple of subcontractors that, one of them defaulted in the middle of their contract, went out of business, another one we had to fire. So, and that was based on quality.
Project manager personnel change, there's
Yeah, yeah.
One, one school we didn't talk about, Jeff, was Cumberland Head. I don't know if you wanna briefly talk about
We should be okay with Cumberland Head.
Windows, windows are gonna be starting soon.
That's, that's the last piece, we're waiting for the windows to be delivered, and it's supposed to be there next week.
Good news is the office staff will be in Cumberland Head, we heard today, Friday.
Friday for ceilings.
Was that Friday? Friday or I heard, I heard Thursday for ceilings. Well, I'm going over tomorrow to above ceiling so they can start them tomorrow. And then so, I wanted to bring up that point. Phil's our guy on the ground here for Tetra Tech, and Eric obviously supports him, as do a lot of other people from Tetra Tech. But at our meeting, we talked about what's the process when something's done, when a room is done. For instance, we have rooms that just have doors cut in for fire code. When a room is done, how do you release that to the unit and our crew, so that, and our teachers, and our principals, so that they can get in the room and start preparing for the opening of the school? And Phil said, and you need a certificate of occupancy, and you need Phil to prove, we need somebody to approve the work. And Phil said, anytime work is done, give me a call, I'm gonna be here that day, and I'm gonna approve the work, and then we're gonna notify Jeff, and Jeff will notify our team. So I give a lot of credit for standing up and making sure that happens, and those spaces are leased, so that we can get in, make sure we get everything done.
We're doing everything we can to not slow the contractors down, you know, all of us.
I have a question about the elementary school entrance, is that gonna be ready? And if not, what's the
It'll be usable, it won't be finished, there'll be finishes to complete, the exterior door, there's two sets of doors going in there, one set, the inner set will be in, unlockable, the outer set won't be in. There's gonna be some masonry on the left wall going in that's not in yet, custom masonry. There will be a wall, they're a temporary wall, they'll take down and night work behind it and put it back up. The transaction window will be a temporary window because that one goes not in yet. But it'll be useful and it's safe and
And to the elementary school's credit and the buildings and grounds credit, they did have a plan ready in case that wasn't been used.
I just have one question, you had mentioned bathrooms, that's like one of the one places our students aren't supervised. When you say the bathrooms will be usable, what does that mean?
They should be, or hopefully they'll be complete.
Complete.
There's two new toilet rooms, start being installed.
In that case, I meant complete.
Okay, I just wanted to know what usable versus complete.
They're, they're an elementary class
Christian bathrooms.
One is a great game, and one is They're not the gang.
Okay.
I have, I have one more question that obviously is gonna be pretty hard to predict, but you were saying that if there is a delay on the track, our turf layer may take another contract? In the meantime, that's a little bit worrisome.
It is worrisome, and I, I made it extremely clear to them that they put the school in a very difficult position. The only way they're taking other projects is if, if they, if, if we can get them in on the 16th, meaning the A-Turf people, and that's the name of the company, and before the 16th
Where'd they get, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
A-Turf.
What's that?
They're A-Turf.
A-Turf is their name.
Yeah.
There's two major turf
Field turf and A-Turf are the two largest players in the area.
Okay.
And, and they work on about a 15-day cycle, so their initial statement back to me this afternoon was if we're gonna be delayed by 15 days, 18 days coming in, should we start another job if we're done in 15 days? I said, I don't care what you do, but you gotta be here by the 16th. So he's gonna get back to me, he's talking to his people in the field, he's gonna get back to me in the morning and let me know, which I'll get back to the school and the contractors here.
Fair enough.
But he, he knows he's gotta be here on the 16th regardless of what else he's doing.
Then I, I guess I want to get to temperature of the board here. We, we have this, I think we, our team has a feeling that the cafeteria and really the the complex, the athletic complex, that we probably don't wanna open those up until they are completely finished, even if we have to wait. You know, we weren't happy about having to wait, we, we made it very, very clear that we want all of our fall athletic teams to at least play a game or two on, that's our goal now, is to have them play a game or two on, on the field, obviously down near the end of the season. But there's been other people who have had ideas like, oh, we could just put the turf down and then wait for the track, and then you don't know if the track will even be down in the, in, in May. You might lose a whole track season just to play a game or two for a couple of teams. So my question to you is, is that the right thinking? Do we, should this, because we could also maybe start the cafeteria a little bit early, have the line done, the serving line done in the cafeteria, and have part of the floor done, but it could jam things up. Or should we just wait till we have a complete finished product and then open up, open up the facilities?
So that's why I was asking the question, because I would like to have it done and be done, and when somebody walks in, they're like, wow, this is really nice, instead of somebody walks in and like, wow, this is half-done. So, I mean, I'm not meaning to grill you guys, but I'm, that's my opinion as when that is done, have it done right, so we're not repairing stuff, so it doesn't look, excuse my language, half-assed. Make it look nice, make it be nice.
There's also liability to it.
Yeah, that was
If it's not done, and something happens, and there's issues, it's also a loss of efficiency because you're trying to work around stuff, you don't know if you're done right.
And another aspect, it seems like minutia at this point, but it's not when you're in it. If we look, if we occupy the space before it's done, we've got issues with punch lists, who marred this? Do you ever really get a new product? And the answer is no, because it gets damaged, especially a large space like that, it gets a lot of use. It's my suggestion to do what wants, do it right, turn it over.
I'm way agree with that.
I've seen a lot of hits.
I would agree with that as well, but I was just, you know, out in the field, what am I gonna do in the interim for some of these athletic teams, if leechers aren't there, host games on that field without leechers?
Yeah, so Mr. Myers, there's a lot of work for him. He has already taken like all the soccer games, and soccer's easy, it's easier, sorry, because there's a home and a home, so you go, you know, Peru comes here once, we go there once. So he loaded up all the first half of our season to be on the road, and the second half to be exclusively at home, to try to give time and maximize, you know, let kids play on the field or whatever. Those kids are gonna, our soccer fields are still there, they're just not where we wanna be because they're down the road. It's not, it's not the best, there's a reason why we built the field, right? As far as football goes, this year's a unique year, there's only three home football games this year. The first two are the first two weeks of the football season, so those are out there, those are September 5th and September 12th, something, you know, seven days later, something like that. The last game, or the last game is a homecoming game, which is right around the, right around the time
October 4th.
October, oh, it's actually October 4th. So we're probably gonna miss that homecoming game, most, most likely. There, there are only two Class B schools playing football this year. I just found out today, I guess Plasford City School District has a Class C school this year. So they'll be in the championship sectional game, which is in the, right near the end of October, first week of November, whenever that is, some of us have that never recorded. There is a chance we could host that game on that, on that field. So those are, those are the options, but so like, those three games now will probably be on the road, but Plasford City School District has been great over the years. One of the reasons why we have this field too is our, remember, our football field has been unplayable sometimes. If you play in the rain, that field doesn't cure really for, again, nobody practices on that field. If you play a game in the rain, you might be off that field for two weeks. So there's been times when we've played in the rain and the next week had to go play on the Plasford City field. So Greg was gonna talk to them today about can we play, can we play a Plasford or a Bailey Avenue? So they're right, you know, right, Plasford is less than one mile outside of our district, and Bailey Avenue is about one to two miles outside of our district. So they're right on the edge of our district. So that's, that's where we're gonna be for football, soccer, we're gonna be on the road early and, and then probably on the road, beginning of the second half of the season, and then, oh, excuse me, on the road early, over the town fields, and then hopefully soccer finishes, finishes regular season mid-October, if you have time for that.
Yeah.
Did I answer your question, Mike?
So, my last question is, so what is the financial impact to the overall, overall capital project? All the problems and delays?
I'm sorry?
What is the financial impact to the capital project?
To the owner? As far as recourse or an actual impact that wasn't anticipated?
Oh.
There's no, there's no, there's no financial impact to the schedule problems that we're talking about right now? Is that your question?
Yes.
There's no impact?
I, I don't wanna get into minutia, but somebody may be like, why didn't you fire the contractor? Why don't you find the new turf seller? Right? Can you just go over why and how complicated that really is?
It's extremely complicated, and it's always a very last resort. You take a contractor off a public project, they're no longer able to bid public projects. That's, and a lot of these contractors, that's their livelihood. They'll fight it tooth and nail. You'll end up in litigation for two to three years, they'll probably stop the project with an Article 78, you won't finish it. Other contractors will be filing claims because they can't finish their contract because the one contractor you're in dispute with isn't finished. It just spirals downhill from there. At worst, or at best, depending on how you look at it, you would supplement their forces, hire another contractor to work alongside of them, and that's a last-ditch effort, because that falls into the language of the bond. Every bonding company's a little bit different, but you can't just not pay a contractor and pay another contractor. It's, you'd spend, the amount of money you're talking, claims and everything, you'd spend again on lawyers, legal fees. Public, public projects are very difficult to get out of once you start litigation.
Last thing I'd say is, we had about an eight-week window, is that what you said, Jeff?
Yeah, that, that's a good point, not to interrupt you, but we knew from the very start this was an extremely aggressive schedule. On top of that, we got eight weeks this year, it's the shortest summer we've had in many years. If you couple that with the asbestos and some structural issues that we found, like I said in the beginning when we started, a two- or three-week impact, it's 30, 40, 50% of your time, you know, in a given area. So everybody's got some fault here, there's things that nobody anticipated, there's contractors that didn't perform the way they should, but it's not something you could point your finger at one contractor and say, you're to blame, and this is what it costs us. The best thing to do is work with the contractors, if we have to supplement the people, we'll do that, but right now, we're on a path where I think we can see the other side. It's unfortunate that we're here discussing opening school without things being complete, but to be absolutely honest with you, it's become the norm in this area of New York State now. There's so much work out there, and there's just not enough labor built.
I'll, I'll finish if I could with two, two points here. We had a kind of a team meeting with a bunch of different contractors today. Phil was there, Wes was there, and our whole team was there among the contractors. It was kind of a gut check meeting, and I was, I think I can speak for everybody, we were pleasantly surprised by what we heard. We were saying, when can you have this done, when can you have this done, when can you have this done? And it was, it was, we were satisfied, and we were pushing, and they were, they were agreement, and, and they were, like I said, Kit Bass, the owner of Bass Hatfield, has been up here a number of times, that doesn't normally happen, right? Never, almost never happens. So we do have the power of that company behind us. Another thing is, I, I try to boil things down into simpler terms. I've remodeled my kitchen before, I've remodeled my house before, and I have a nice plan set up, and I thought it was gonna take me this long. I never hit my target on my $60,000 a month, right? This is a $19 million project, you know, and I, I just think of one story, I'll tell two stories, just involving the track. This is about structural steel or wires, where you don't know where they go, and it takes two days to figure out where, where they're gonna go. But there's one subcontractor that had to dig the posts, dig holes to put these posts in for, for a net, and they bid that, that thing, and they thought it was gonna take them on, I'm gonna say seven days, because they were gonna do 24 holes a day, that's the way they bid. Well, I saw those guys in one spot for like a day and a half, and, and I'm sure they thought there's gonna be rocks in there, the hole's this big. Sitting next, sitting next to that hole, maybe some of you guys saw when you drove Sitting next, sitting next to that hole, maybe some of you guys saw when you drove by, was a boulder this big. So that took them a lot longer and that put everybody else, every other subcontractor, they felt behind a day. Another thing that we did find was, when they started digging, they found, they found structures in the, they found rocks.
Rocks and boulders.
More rocks and boulders. They also found some drainage structures in there. And this is our subcontractor on the field. So that took a lot of time because the architects have to get involved and the engineers have to get involved and they call up the plan. And that, neither one of those, we still, it set those subcontractors behind. But that contractor in general was able to make up that work. But I just want to tell you, there's a lot of things happening in a $19 million project, just like it would happen on your $100,000 project at home, that do put you behind. And then how do you catch up is really hard.
And they're putting effort forward. They're, they're paying overtime out of their own pocket. They're working long hours, especially the site work contractor, he's doing a fantastic job. He's working 12 hours a day, six days a week. And I'm sure he didn't bid that.
So, yeah, so guys working on track.
Yeah, they're, they're.
They're working every single day.
They're probably working right now.
They're, we just left them.
I was going to say, the, the short term, you know, convenience is low work, but low term payoff.
Yes.
The quality and, and, so, and I was going to say, I know I've done every one of my house. And I've had, you know, nothing ever goes unplanned. You can outline something and it takes one thing and then it's all, you know? So you really, it's kind of, to me, it's unrealistic to even think that it would all be one and eight weeks to begin with. With that kind of money, that kind of innovation. So it's, it's a no surprise to me, but like, the long term payoff is going to be great.
And I think right now, we're talking about completely done, everything, all GI, learning data, everything. We're, we're here and we're about November coming, so that's really a great deal. We'd like to have it done. Also?
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second presentation is on ESSA. It's Teri Calabrese Gray from CBES and Shelley Manchester, grant procurement supervisor from CBES.
Good evening. And thank you for inviting us to be here. Just to give you a little overview, with the ESSA Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Dan had asked us, we sort of are going to do a two promise approach. So Shelley's going to do a piece that satisfies some of your consolidated applications that you need to get submitted to SED. So that'll satisfy one of them. And then I'm going to just do a broad overview of ESSA and some of the accountability measures, just to make some sense of some of it, okay? I don't promise to deliver all of it. Because it gets very weedy and we're not getting in the weeds.
We're not getting in the weeds.
Sorry. Yeah?
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to start. As Teri mentioned, my part of the presentation actually fulfills the consolidated applications consultation portion. Go ahead.
Hi.
Okay. So as part of the consolidated application, the district has to every year consult with different constituencies who would be stakeholders and how their money is spent. So the consolidated application will go forward from there.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
I get a clicker. I'm like, this is an interesting clicker.
All right, so what it.
Wait, oh, my bad. Okay, so let me go. Okay, are you good with it?
Yes, you can go forward, yes. So.
There, great.
So, we skipped over this, this slide that says, if you have any questions about the way the money is proposed to be spent this year, please contact Mr. Mannix.
That's right.
Okay. So what is ESSA? ESSA is the Every Student Succeeds Act. It was authorized back in 2015. It took the place of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which was the original federal legislation that really brought the federal government into decision making around how children across the nation are educated. It maintains some of the provisions of that as well as the, the successor to that, which was the No Child Left Behind, which probably most of us are familiar with. It includes the reauthorization of Title I. And it makes some, some pretty interesting distinctions from what, from both No Child Left Behind and the original authorization. One of the things that it does that's pretty common from both of the other acts is it upholds all of, all of the protections for students who are disadvantaged. That's what it's really all about. The monies that come to the district are to benefit those students. It requires that students are taught at high academic standards and ensures that vital information is provided to educators and communities through annual assessments that measure students' progress. It helps support innovation. And it sustains and expands the high quality preschool, which most of you are aware, I'm sure, that Beakman Town has not only a four-year-old pre-K, but a three-year-old pre-K. And this year, those two grants were consolidated into what's called the Consolidated Pre-K Grant. So that also is through the ESSA program. It's a separate arm of it, but it is part of it. And ESSA funds through the titles can actually be used to sustain those. Probably one of the biggest changes is the, the, kind of the controls around this. And who makes the decisions about how and what you do in a school district. Rather than being top down, ESSA really is bottom up. Districts, states have more control over the decision making about how they, the standards are still the same. They still want the high quality standards. But now that instead of the federal government coming in and saying, this is how you will teach, they are giving up the opportunity to states and districts to decide that for themselves based on their local needs. So the application that I'm working on right now as your grants procurement specialist is the ESSA consolidated application. It comes out annually. The grants that Beakman Town is eligible to receive and received allocations for are Title I, Improving Academic Achievement for Disadvantaged Students. Title I Part D, which are transition services to students that are incarcerated. Title II Part A, which is basically professional development. And Title IV, which is, it's not a new title, but is, it is a relatively newly funded title because it was phased out under No Child Left Behind and it came back with ESSA. So now Title IV Part A is for student support and well-rounded academic enrichment. So the application follows a state plan. New York State, over the course of, over a year, right after the ESSA was implemented, had to submit a plan saying, this is how we're going to educate. This is how we're going to use the federal monies to educate students and this is our accountability. This is how we're going to measure whether or not we're successful. So, as such, the state can collect the information that it needs necessary for the proper implementation of their grant plan, now that it's been approved. And the consolidated application really focuses on the consultation requirement of this constituency group such as yourself to make sure that there's evidence that this has happened and this kind of ground swell up has actually occurred. That it isn't people sitting in ivory towers making the decisions about how children are educated. So, we're going to go right into the titles now. Title I Part A, the purpose is to make sure that all students receive a good education regardless of where they come from. There is a required set aside that the district has to adhere to for a home, it's called a homeless reserve. This is for a student who may be temporarily displaced or someone coming from outside of the district that's homeless, that requires additional added support. So these things are usually basic things like school supplies. Many times your, your PFO, your PTAs will kind of pitch in on those things. But the state also requires that districts reserve a little bit of money aside of, from their Title I allocation to, to meet those needs. And the other thing that they require is for non-public schools, whether they're in your catchment area or outside, if you have students who are Title I eligible, low income eligible, and they go to a private school, the money that would be generated from them has to follow them to the public school or the, the non-public school. So in your case, you don't have any private schools in your catchment area, but you do have a couple of students that attend Seton that Seton has told me are low income students. And so we do have an allocation that goes to the Seton School to help prepare those students. Calculations for Title I are based on these things. I don't think there's anything new here. It's census, institutions for the neglect, that's pretty much your Title I Part D. Numbers of students in foster care and your tan of students from the Office of Temporary Disability Assistance. So they take those numbers, they look at those across the state, and then the state kind of measures out those allocations. Your allocation this year is just under a half a million dollars, $449,892. It's $6,655 less than last year. And that could be for a number of reasons. So, what are we proposing to do with it this year? Just want to back up a little bit. We spent a lot of time in May and June, meeting with principals particularly, and stakeholder groups in every single school in your district to talk about what the needs of your students are. And so some of the things that came out and these needs are reflected not only in this budget, but in your general fund budget. So we're, we're supporting four academic intervention services teachers. One teacher at the middle school, high school learning center. And there are some stipends in there for the after-school tutoring. After-school tutoring, under Title I, has to be done by certified teachers. You can't just pay anybody off the street. So we actually have to include certified teacher stipends in that. The other thing that's in Title I this year are consultant costs. One of the things that came to the top when we were doing our, our needs assessment at each school was training on response to intervention, classroom management, inclusion, coaching and executive functioning. So this came across, across the board, district-wide, as a need to revisit some of this and to strengthen those. You've got a great plan in place, but teachers, administrators across the board, poly's teachers, all felt that it might be beneficial for the district, and this is a district-wide initiative, to look at that and bringing a consultant in to maybe do some visiting. And so Polly can probably tell you more about the plan for that, but it is included in your budget. The last things in there are supplies and materials. Again, that homeless reserve, there's a small amount of money in there for that. And then there's a small amount of money in there for your Title I eligible students that are attending Seton. And I have a meeting with Mary Forbes tomorrow to talk about how they plan on using that money. So, can't read it, but it says Title II Part A. So these are the, these are the purposes for Title II Part A. But as I said, short, short part of it is it's professional development. It's really to raise the quality of both teachers and school leaders. And at the very bottom, you'll see that it also, you can also use what's called transferability. So this district chooses not to, but in some districts that get very small Title I allocations, where it wouldn't even cover one teacher, you know, AIS teacher, sometimes they'll use what's called transferability from Title II to help cover the cost of that teacher. You folks are not in that position, so we can actually use the money that's intended for professional development for professional development. Calculations for Title II, 20%, number of individuals, five to 17 in the geographic area. And then the other percentage, the 80% is really based again on that federal poverty guidelines. Your allocation this year is $70,446, $11,620 less than last year. That's a little bit of a hit this year. So Title II Part A funds for this year, the proposed plan for this is to use some evidence-based professional development for public school teachers and leaders to improve student academic outcomes through teacher mentoring programs. Stipends for training and educational technology and integration. And I should correct this slide, it's not just stipends, there's also conference travel for that. The FETC conference is in this grant. Summertime professional development through professional learning communities to implement the next generation learning standards. So those professional learning communities can be groups of teachers, they can be groups of administrators, they can be groups of both. And they, they would get together and look at curriculum, teaching methods, everything you would have to do to implement those learning standards. The last grant that we're going to talk about is the Title IV Part A. This is the newer one that I mentioned. This one is a little different. It's kind of been molded together, if you will, so that it's got multipurpose. To provide all students with access to well-rounded educational opportunities, to improve school conditions. And so that would be, could be safety, physical safety, or it could be climate, school climate. And improve the use of technology in order to improve academic achievement. So again, thinking about technology as being a tool. It provides LEAs and schools a flexibility to tailor how you use this, what, where you want to invest. But there are some caveats. Your allocation is $33,923, $1,617 less than last year. And because you have an allocation of over $30,000, 20% of your allocation must be used for those well-rounded educational opportunities. 20% must be used for safe and healthy students. And then you may use 5% for technology purchases. So, those are the, yeah, that's okay. So those are the thresholds that I have to meet when I'm planning your budget for this one. So, under that, what we've talked about again, based on meetings with your principals, your stakeholders, needs assessments, the things that we've landed on is uses for this year. Cost of college entrance exams, this is particularly for the Clint Community College PAC exams, those college entrance exams. And then the Clint Community College also has this fab lab that is starting, I believe, next year. They're going to be making trips to different schools. And they're going to be bringing a laboratory experience that's going to actually give students the opportunity to get some job credential certificates. So things like the Snap-on tool certifications, those types of things. And also consultant costs to implement your top 20 social emotional learning curriculum. So this goes back to that school climate requirement. Willow Sweeney has been working with the district last year, will continue working with the district this year.
Will, well, unfortunately, Will had a tragic health issue in her family, so it's her, it's a company she works for.
Right. So, but that, so it's the top 20, I believe is the name of the curriculum. And that's being implemented, fully implemented this year. I know some work started last year, more work will continue this year. So there's money in the grant for that. One of the things that we heard was the need for more opportunities for students to travel regionally, to have experiences in the arts, in sciences, technology. So we've put in some money for some field trips. And those are more at the discretion of principals. So we did a, a building allocation that principals can look at, teachers can request. So we put some money in for that. And then there's a little bit of money left for electronic learning devices, which I think we're going to be augmenting. I was checking with Jen Stahl yesterday, and we're going to have some carryover in Title IV from this prior year. So it's not a lot, but it's a little. So I think even though there's not a lot of money there, if we can tie it to, this is an interesting thing. So you can't buy electronics just to buy electronics, but if you tie them to an enrichment activity, then it gets it out of that 5% and it becomes enrichment. So if we can tie them to actual project-based learning, we can actually increase the amount of money and technology if it's needed. If it's not, we'll put it towards one of the other areas. And I'm going to turn it over to Teri now to talk to you about the accountability parts of ESSA.
Okay, so just a quick overview. I'm going to spend the majority of my time on this slide, plus you're going to probably reference the color handout that goes along with it. So the first one, as Shelley was talking about, is the student achievement. That clicker is finicky.
Yeah, I didn't even do anything.
It flips on the side, like an, there you go, good. Okay, so the student achievement piece of it, it shows you what exams are talking about. Your school, Beakman Town, like any other school, would just be compared to the statewide numbers. So there's no comparison, how you're doing each year and any projections. It's just a statewide measure that you're compared to. So based on those exams, that's one piece of what they do. So, and I'm not going to read these, you can read them yourself, but I just want to give you the quick overview of the different measures. Because when your administrators go in and look at their reports, these charts go on and on and on and on, right? You just scroll through and it's just column after column after column, okay? And you're just looking for some certain numbers. That's all you want to see, and all you want to see is in good standing and everything. So you pay, you don't pay attention to the other stuff, unless it's something that we have to pay attention to. Student growth, again, that one you're very familiar with, with all the testing that we've done in grades three through eight. So as you know, every student was getting a growth score from this date. So that's really where they compare like third grade performance to fourth grade performance. And then they rate the student as a one, two, three or four, depending on how they perform on that test. And did they make a year's worth of growth from third grade to fourth grade or seventh grade to eighth grade? They're just checking to make sure those students are staying on track. Okay, so every student gets that score and then you get a score for your whole building. So that's the second piece. The academic progress piece is just language arts and math. And they are measured across long. The academic progress piece is just language arts and math, and they are measured across long-term goals and interim targets. And I'm not getting into all the formulas, because many of them are, like, even I, a math person, they're great, but it's like, it just gets too much. And then, sometimes we just think it's a magic box, I put a number in, and a number seems to come out, because you can't get the exact number they may get. So it's hard to explain that piece, but they do, what they do with language arts and math is they look at all your measures, and then what the state does is they say, okay, based on your measure this year, here's where you need to be next year, and next year. And they sort of go five years out, and so they really set these, they're calling closing the gap targets for you. So like Shelley and her team, that's what they do, is they look at their gaps, where they have those, and then that's where they come up with the plan of where they're gonna allocate money, because that's what they're trying to close, are those gaps for some, either subgroups of students, or it's your overall aggregate. So, that's the piece with the academic progress. ELP, I don't think you have enough reportable students, so that one we're not gonna cover. Chronic absenteeism, this is a new measure started last year, and this one has been very important to understand. It's, again, not very, it's, some people say, oh, ten percent is eighteen days, they can't miss over eighteen days. Well, it's always not that simple, because you gotta figure out how attendance is recorded. So the most important thing you can do is report your attendance correctly. And the best way to do that is through your student management system. So it's very important, teachers are taking attendance at the beginning of every class. You hate to hard-on people, but it's critical, because students can get half-day attendance, they can get quarter-day attendance. So, every little bit is important, so nobody can not pay attention to the data. Also, your CIO is very important in this role, making sure this data is being reported correctly. Because after a while, you keep accepting this data, you can't, after a while, it goes to level two in the state, and somebody says, oh, well, we never, field trips, we count them as absent. No, field trips are educational, so they should be getting credit for being there, you know? And the schools have to determine what policies do you have in place, what practices do you have in place, where you say a student is in attendance. So, so that's something just to keep in mind about your policies and procedures. College and career readiness, this is another new one for us, and civic readiness, that's another piece of that. It's on the other one, I don't know if it's on that here, but, that's one we just started measuring, and I'm gonna talk about the chart, another chart. So, so first of all, this is the chart I've been referring to. Now, if you go to the back, this is a nice little visual for you, for you to say, where are these scores coming from? So, if you look at the blue circle, the elementary and middle schools, by itself, only student growth is done at the elementary and middle school level for ELA and math. Okay, in the high school on the right, you'll see composite performance, also includes social studies in the high school, so that's important. Graduation rates, we finally won that battle, we got four, five, and six-year cohorts, because if you remember in the very beginning, they were like, nope, four years, if they don't graduate, they don't count, right? They're all dropouts, and we're like, that's not fair, does everybody get to the finish line of a marathon at the same time? No, I mean, why would you put that? So, because of many different groups around the state hammering away at that, we finally did get the four, five, and six-year cohort. So now we do allow students to complete in five years or to complete in six years, so that's good. The college career, that's brand-new, the civic readiness piece. Now, in the middle says we do, they compare both. So you'll see with that composite performance, they do ELA, math, and science for academic progress, chronic absenteeism, okay, and ELPs. So I, that just helps you as a quick visual to sort of figure out where some of these scores and numbers are coming from. And then, you've probably seen this already, I bet, Matt and Dan have probably maybe shared this with you, maybe not to this detail, I'm not sure. But, when you talk about graduation rates, that's another measure that's very important, because the state harps on graduation rates, that gets in the newspaper, right? Everybody shares, compares, what are similar schools, how do we rank compared to everybody else? But the main thing is, and I was glad to see the whole social-emotional learning component in here, we gotta get kids to come to school, right? We gotta connect, somehow we have to give them a purpose to come to school. And many times we find that some students just don't have an interaction with an adult all day. They come here, they sort of blend in, they go home. And so people, you know, some students will be like, well, nobody will notice if I'm not there, because nobody cares, right? So somehow, some way, we have to reach all these students as best we can. Now, we know it's very difficult, but we will do our best to make sure we get them to be part of this community. And that's a key piece for us, and ways you can do that, and inclusive, I was walking by the auditorium and I heard Matt say, you know, at cafeteria, if you happen to see someone sitting by themselves, why don't you go over and sit with them in the cafeteria? I mean, I just happened to walk by coming to this meeting, and I'm like, yes, I mean, they've seen, and you've probably seen them on YouTube and others, where they show these kids sitting alone, and then these kids just come over and bring their lunch and sit with the kid. And it's like they have lunch buddies, where they actually go outside and they sit in this courtyard, and kids will go over and sit with kids who don't have somebody to be around. That makes a big difference, and kids are more apt to come back to school, because they feel part of something bigger. So, so that's a key piece that I like to remind people. But, on this sheet, I think there's some important things that you should know here, because what you do is for every student, you get a score from zero to two. So, if you have a typical student, let's say he gets Regents' diploma with advanced designation, you'll see they're gonna get a two, right? Those are your students, they've met all the requirements, and they also went above and beyond with some of the Regents' exams, so that's a two. So now, if you scroll down through that list, some other interesting ones, the Regents' diploma, you have, I think you still have AP programs here, right?
Yeah.
So if you have the AP program, and I don't think you have, I think it must have ID anywhere. But if you have any of those advanced programs, your students get credit for being in those more rigorous programs, so that's a plus. So even if they get a Regents', they didn't get advanced Regents', but they got a Regents' diploma, but they also take AP, that's good, okay? Also, they have the piece about Regents' local diploma, and they pass a national certified CTE exam. That's another one that's important, because it gives another student an option, and it counts as a two for you. So if you have students, possibly at CB Tech or a state-approved CTE program here at Beadmentown, those students, if they pass successfully and pass all the other exams, there are two as well. It's like, that's awesome, okay? So, and you look down through another one, they got like the Regents' or local diploma, that just gets a one. Now go up above, Regents' diploma with CDOTS credential, that Career Development Occupational Studies. And I saw where, you know, students who are gonna get experiences at the college, some of those type things. There is a CDOTS credential that students can take either a test, a work readiness test. If they get that credential before they graduate, they have a Regents' diploma with the CDOTS, they're gonna get a one point five. So, most kids will be like, yeah, I get a Regents' diploma, I'm good. Well, that only gives you a one, if you get a one point five, you do the CDOTS part. Also, at CB Tech, they do the work readiness credential, and you can get that, and that automatically counts as CDOTS. So all these things can keep getting you points. And I tell you, that's important, but really I think it's important in making an overall student, when you think about it. We want students to be successful in the workplace, so academics are important, but academics aren't the only thing. They have to also have a lot of those soft skills that we talk about to make them successful, and just life in general. So, I think that's important to note there. And also, if you have a student who just gets a CDOTS credential, it's still a point five. So those are some things that where you get, come up with that, your work readiness score, that's some of the measures that they're using. And there'll be new measures, I guarantee, in the future, because I hear a lot about micro-credentialed, credentialed, all those things. Those are gonna be important, that students can add to their little portfolio, and that's gonna bump them up in score. So, so anyway, that's a lot of time on that one slide, but I think it gives you a good flavor of everything there. I'm not gonna read you these slides, but I will tell you, you have to hit escape on the keyboards. Yeah, it's not, yeah. So, was there a... That's why I ended up not doing it.
Terry, we're figuring, we're figuring that, can we just go over the opt-out component of this in the New York State plan? As somebody who's not a supporter of testing our eight-year-old students for three days, and testing our eighteen-year-old students for thirty-five minutes. You know, we all, it's easy to have a problem with our three-through-eight testing. And a lot of people have opted out in New York State, but I believe that there's a component in here where districts get hurt and they do...
Yeah, it's in that.
It's right there.
Right.
Yes.
So, you will see right here on the elementary pieces of it in the middle, so those students who scored a level one, which, let's say they didn't very, they did very poorly on the test, okay, that's a level one. Or students who opt out, you're not getting any points for those students. So that danger, okay, because that is factored in. Now, they do it with and they do it without, so they do with and pull out, but the question is too, people have to wonder, you know, because some people are like, oh, well, who are your opt-outs? Are they all your high-performance kids, are they New York-born kids, are they mixed, are they? It's, it's a bag of trying to figure all that out. So, I'm not sure at Beadmentown, what, if there's any particular demographic or not that's opting out. But that's something you would have to look at, but I would highly encourage, I know there's like a couple school districts, we had one school district put a really high opt-out rate, and they did a lot of community, and a lot of engagement, and they actually bumped up their participation rate. And they, they did a lot of educating to people, because the problem is, if you continually have this issue of opt-outs, it's going to catch up to you at some point. And that's where they talk about, you'll be classified as not in good standing, and you'll get some designation on your, on your charts, and that's when you're gonna have to address it as a whole. So I hate to say, but, I mean, you know, the commissioner, she's tried as much as she could to get more people to participate in these tests, they did cut down the test from three days to two days, but some people say, well, it just made the sections longer, but I do think they're trying to do as best they can. And, you know, it's just, you're right in the fact that, you know, I always say, it can hurt you. Over time, it can add up and accumulate, because again, you're not getting points for those students. So, some of those students may have been a level one, right, so that's not a big deal. But what if they were a two, a three, or a four? Those are the ones that are gonna have an impact on you over time. And like I said, you get a low-level measure, and then you get a high measure. And, so if you meet, like, you'll see on another, do I have those charts on here, or did I take those? I think I took those out. But anyway, I'm getting in the weeds a little bit, but they'll set a low and a high, and so if you meet the low, you get something, but you don't get it very well. If you meet the high, that's better, and then if you meet this plus another, your closing gap score, then you actually can get more. So, it's, it gets a little weird, but at the same time, it may help you, it may hurt you. It just depends on how your number reflects, and who's not taking the test. I don't know the students, but, so I don't wanna make any assumptions of that.
And I was gonna say, I think what's important to note is that in all of the meetings that happen in every building in preparation for your consolidated application, and just good Title I planning in general, these conversations happened, and principals and teachers talked about how to make testing less stressful for students. They talked about how to do it well, you know, and to encourage more students to opt-in. How to communicate with parents, and not make it such a high-stakes thing. So there were, there were strategies that were discussed, I know that all of the schools are, you know, engaging in that, particularly at your elementary schools, because that seems to be the area. Let's face it, if you're at high school and you opt out, you don't graduate. You gotta take, you gotta take the tests. So, looking at it too as a preparation, you know, we start in elementary schools with some testing, and if we, if we make it the right way, and we talk about it, you know, the correct way, we present it the right way to our students, it doesn't become such a high-stakes kind of, this type thing for them.
Question is, do we get any value of ESSA for using the shorter-term, quicker feedback test than using elementary like Star Web? All of that, because one of the complaints of using the state assessments is that by taking the feedback in elementary, where there's so much growth, you're not...
It's too late. Drawn to the next grade. We don't even have them yet, it's end of August, we don't have them.
Right, right, whereas the...
And as somebody who's had to write your, your plans and talk about narrative,
Very difficult.
one of the things I have to do under each of these is talk about your progress from prior year, and everything we're looking at is two years old, so we've actually been switching this year to local assessments.
Okay, so now my...
So we're making, so while the state doesn't recognize them formally as part of the accountability system, they do recognize them as part of your data-driven instruction. So that's what we're looking at now and moving towards.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we...
Now, now my concern is, is there a mechanism for the educators to know best, their students best, to know how to develop them, that's not being limited by the state run, right?
Correct, because the summative assessment is like, we always say, you know, with the children, well, we're in high school. But, we talk about autopsies, right? It's a little late, right? It's like, the summative are so far gone, it's like, okay, I can't even help this kid, because they've lost over a year maybe of progress. So that's why your formative piece that Shelley's talking about, and your buildings use, those are the pieces. You want continual formative assessments going on, not sit down for hours and take tests, but quick little check-ins to know, are these students keeping up? And if they're not, it's easier to intervene sooner than it is to wait until, oh my god, they need everything. And then you got teachers who are like, I'm the seventh-grade teacher, this kid's reading at a fourth-grade level, what do you want me to do? Right, I mean, those are the things we hear, so it's like, what can we do? And when I saw RTI, that's another great example, of making sure those students, so you will have a mechanism for measuring those students and making sure they're continually making progress, and if not, what are the proper interventions to make, you know, support that student so that they can? So I would encourage that. I don't think, and then I think I just, I don't, yeah. And that's just showing your student academic achievement, that's the one that links just to statewide ranking. All the rest, you get put into these measures, where they talk about measures of interim progress, and they set these targets for you, and they expect you to close the gap on those targets. So, anyway, this is where I was talking about the levels, where there's a low level and a high level, like a level one. So, that's a piece, we keep going, and again, you can look at this, but, like I said, this is really accountability, is almost like a whole day training to go through all this. But, if not for you, you fly to a different level as board members, but you need to know and trust and question, you know, are students making progress? Are they, you know, making that year in a year? And if they're not, maybe some students are just gonna, they're gonna have a different target, and that's okay too. Because, again, not everybody learns at the same rate, but however, we don't wanna go too easy and not expect, you know, not set high expectations, because we want that as well. So, so I think we're ready to, anybody else?
Oh, and here's the most important slide.
Yes. Yes, that is the most important slide. You're in good standing in all areas, so that's good. So, but I always say, you always have to pay attention to this, because, again, as you go up, it gets harder and harder, right, to make those targets, so it's just, those targets will always keep going up for you. So...
So does anybody have any questions for us?
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Um, on slide number five, it's one, two, three, fourth bullet down, helps to support, they grow, local innovations, including evidence-based and place-based intervention strategy, what is a place-based intervention?
They're, they're locally developed, so they have to be evidence-based, and so, so when we look at presenting something to the state, we have two ways of doing it. We can say, this is evidence-based, here's, here's how we know that it works. Or we can say, we're testing it, it's place-based, we're, we're gonna be the testers, this is how we're going to measure our progress in this, we're gonna be the innovators. So they can, you can do either, but there is a litmus test for either one of them. It has to have a logic model, it has to be, you know, it has to make sense, the things that you're saying you're gonna do.
Right. All right.
So our scoreboard, good standing grade, you said?
When you see a good standing, that's great.
Is, is there, where are we in the good standing grade? Is there a lot of...
So, so there are, so every school district this year was asked to do addendums for any areas where they scored a level one. And you had some level ones, every school, every school had a level one somewhere. And so, that's what, those meetings that I did with all of your stakeholders and your principals, we met at each building. And for example, I'll pick on Duffy, because Duffy's easy, because she had one level one in her building, which was chronic absenteeism at the middle school. That's the only place the middle school scored a level one. So her team got together and they brainstormed the reasons for that, what they could do, you know, took all the things that Terry talked about, you know, making it more welcoming, but also the other side, the teeth side. So I mean, they, they really looked at it from both directions, that social-emotional, you know, supports and all of that, but also, so what happens when, you know, you have a student who's missed eighteen days, and they're not, they're not responding, and their parents aren't responding, you know, what do we do then? So they really ran the gamut and actually developed a plan. So, that's what we've been doing since, we actually did this in May and June this year, which was very helpful to me to be able to sit down and do budgets from, because I could take all of those ideas and all of those strategies and talk about what is already paid for in your, through your general fund, through your already, what are you already doing, and then what do you need additional money for? Because all of these grant funds are what's called supplemental, they don't pay for your basic education program. They are layovers, they're the extras. So anything that you look at doing with a title fund is something that you would do with your general fund in Jack usually. So that's what we got to do, and it was very helpful, and I, and I have to say, the leadership team here is top-notch.
So, even standing again, or are we kind of middle, just make it?
It depends on the measure.
They don't rank you, they don't rank...
Every, you get every measure, so there's, there's so many of them, you're gonna see like a hundred, one, two, threes, fours. Like, it just goes on and on, so there's not an overall like score, it's just your certain areas, and you're gonna see them for...
And you're gonna see them for science, for social studies, for English, for math, for it includes.
And for progress and for the civic engagement and the growth scores. And and so all of those have different ones. So yes, you had some ones in the elementary school for some of the growth scores. But that's where that participation comes in. Because we're looking at it and it's so, it coordinated that the ones where you have ones are also the ones where they have the weighted growth scores. So they were counting opt-outs at zeros.
Right.
So when we look at that, it's hard to say whether it's an instructional issue or if it's an opt-out issue because they are in comparison with everybody else in the state. Your score, you know, your number, your index is compared and it's a percentile. So you score a one based on a, you know, ten percent or below in the state for that particular area. So it's hard to really, you know, that and the combined of your, whether you made your growth growth rates. So I can't tell you, I can't, I I wish I could give you, say, you guys are number one, but they don't do it that way. Any other questions?
Yes.
And maybe I missed this, I'm not sure, but the amount of money, how are those figures decided? And what's, what are the reasons for the differences?
So you mean your allocation as opposed to another district's allocation?
Yep.
Though, yeah, those are on those slides and and there are very complex formulas that really determine that. Again, much like the accountability, I don't understand it, I don't know how they do it. I have to trust that state ed.
Do you trust those formulas?
I try.
Okay.
I try. I mean, you would know more than I do because you're in on those meetings, but.
I don't trust those formulas. Quiet, I mean, you're great, your job's.
But that's what I mean, you know, I I know what I'm told, how they how they divvy out the money statewide. I know that, you know, there's administrative costs that come off the top that of all the money that comes to New York State for state ed and for accountability people and for people that work in public schools. And so I mean, there's tons of, you know, monies that come off the top for that and for initiatives, state initiatives. Um and then after that, it gets divvied out and it's supposed to be divvied out according to, like I said, how those slides say. Um but uh but I I don't know that I trust it or not, but I haven't heard anybody challenge it, so I don't know. Other questions? So the last thing for me, um as I mentioned, this is part of the accountability, what we have to do for your consolidated application. And so there are actually forms that I'm going to pass around with a blue pen because this is state ed and we do everything in blue for state ed. So I'm going to ask you each to sign on this form, it's just a consultation collaboration form. Um in signing it, it does, it just affirms that this consultation occurred, does not indicate agreement. So you can disagree with how the district is spending its money and you can take that up with Mr. Mannix if you do. Um but I do ask that you sign the sheets.
Good, it's important, so obviously there are board members, but almost everybody here is a parent. Did you want any?
I would, yes, so on this thing, if if you look, it says they want you to print and then sign your name and then put your position, so you you could say board member or you can say your community position, like. So we we have constituency groups that we have to reach, um and one of those are community partners and organizations. So if you belong to a community partner organization and you happen to be a parent, you can put that organization and you can sign organization or you can sign parent, either way. Um but whatever group you want to affiliate yourself with, I'm happy to have you sign.
Do you do more than one?
What's that?
Do you do more than one?
You can, yes, you can. And I'm gonna do another form starting over here just so that we can move this along. And if there's no other questions, I will just thank you.
Do you have to be a resident?
No, no, you have to be, you have to be, I I actually signed yours as a person with demonstrated experience is what I signed. Jen signed it for your for your school business official, so no, you do not have to be a resident.
Does anyone have any more questions?
Oh, yes.
While everyone signs, I'm.
Great, thanks. Guys, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next section that was uh on the agenda, our reports. And we'll start our reports with Superintendent of Schools, Daniel Manix.
Really, the report I would probably share with you most would be capital projects, we spent a lot of time on that. The only other um component is we've been working really hard with Siemens. Uh I was on the phone with some people in Chicago today to wrap up the energy performance contract, which has taken far too long. Um it's nice to hear that the people in the higher positions at Siemens uh agree and are committed to finishing the project. So a lot of time and energy and effort is put into that as well. And then just making sure that the school is ready to be open. You know, we're working hard and I I give uh everybody a lot of credit. We're gonna, we're gonna have another solid opening. That, let's see. So you've seen some of the information that put out in the energy performance contract. But uh we've had a lot of conversations, uh meetings, I actually went to Boston, AI came here. Uh I have spreadsheets now on closeout dates. I was really disappointed to let them know that some of those closeout dates had to be determined. And I was pretty blunt as a, on behalf of the district, saying to be determined is not an acceptable answer at this point. There was, this project was to be closed out over a year and a half ago. You can't tell me now that you can't determine when you're gonna close them out. And we had agreed from the higher officials at Siemens and they're pushing, they have a meeting tomorrow and we'll have dates by Thursday of when everything will be closed out. And then I asked them to not only tell me when it's gonna be closed out, but to ensure that it will be closed out on those days. And hopefully we'll have that traction because once the project's closed out, stated date starts flowing and then you can actually start making calculations on the energy saving. And they are committed to cutting a check if their services don't meet the energy savings that they said they that they said it would. Um it'll be interesting to see if they hit those targets, I think they will, I think they will. Thank you.
Right. Um next, we have ex ex student officio, our board member, Grant Decker. Um I wanna thank him for attending the meeting tonight, taking time out of the summer. And um for those of you who may or may not have been um here uh our last meeting, this is our student, Grant Decker.
Uh hi, I'm Grant Decker. Uh looking forward to working with everyone throughout the year. Um I'm going to give an impromptu little uh, we, sorry, was it?
Update?
Yeah, update on the high school. Uh so fall sports have started, the fall started a couple of days ago, soccer started a couple of days ago. Uh I can see gymnastics backstate from where I am at Churating also. Uh about capital projects, I feel like, as I said, I actually expected it to be completed on time. I mean, something that big, like you said, ninety million dollars. Um I expected there to be pickups along the way, so I understand that. Even as disappointing as it might be as someone who plays football, we're not gonna get a single uh.
We'll get to it.
But I just, so uh I get where the district is on that project. The ninth grade orientation is currently underway. Um I know they're going through to where you set up the school with some peer mentors that signed up uh over the summer, which are uh student-led tour groups that'll show uh our new members of the high school, the rooms and ropes of the district.
Right, thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Grant. Um how is the student body, are they looking forward to that capital project? Having a nice field and all that stuff? Uh what's the, what's the temperature of the the students?
We were expecting it to be done by the beginning of the season.
Oh, were they? It could be a little bit disappointed, huh?
Just a little bit.
Thanks.
So the gym looks excellent.
Yeah, the gym looks really nice. That's why I was in that uh last Tuesday, that gym looks nice, that floor is really nice. It doesn't smell good, but it looks. It's fun to play on, that's for sure. It is sticky.
All right, well, thank you very much, Grant. Um I'm gonna backtrack just a little bit um with this business manager, Jennifer Thompson.
Yep, um I just wanna hit on the fact that we're going over the tax warrant tonight that's in your packets. Um our tax rate is seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents per thousand, which last year it was seventeen fifty-two, so it's up nineteen cents. For the average taxpayer, say you have a hundred thousand dollar home, it's an additional nineteen dollars a year. So it's a little over a percent increase. Uh just so if people are asking, that's real. That's it for me.
All right, we have an ultimate report this evening. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes, may I have a motion please?
Motion.
Thank you, Crystal, second. Mike? Any questions or discussions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated eight twenty two thousand nineteen. May I have a motion please?
Question.
Mike, second.
Second.
Mark? Any questions or discussion? Seeing that there's none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations and appointments be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion please?
Motion.
Mike, second.
Second.
Mark? Any questions or discussion? Seeing that there's none, all in favor?
Aye. It's two of us.
Yes.
Like this, and I know the motion was approved, I just liked it. That the extracurricular assignments, those were approved, there's going to be a number that will be retroactively approved in the next quarter. So I'll approve some internally and I'll bring them, I'll bring them forward. Uh what we're trying to do this year um is ensure that clubs are meeting an appropriate number of times and in meeting at the appropriate times and having the appropriate number of students participate to fund the particular extracurriculars. So there's a little bit more accountability there. So it's different, you may hear some pushback, but I think it's approved thing to do. We don't wanna spend two thousand dollars for somebody to have a club that meets twice a year.
Isn't there a policy that drives that anywhere?
There's not a policy that drives that. There's not, there's a policy that drives how clubs fundraise and account for their monies. There's not a policy that drives how, and there's, because everything's different. I mean, how many times the drama club advisor meets, it's completely different than the expectation.
Oh, you're right, it was only about through the audit committee based on insurance, financials, and that.
Correct, we audit those and and we're doing really well, Jen, we're just closing the box.
Any more questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. On to page ten of sixteen. Okay. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, municipal cooperation agreement, SARANAC, CBTEC criteria, Beattie Town Central School District K-12 comprehensive school counseling program, suicide prevention plan and crisis response plan be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion please?
A motion.
Mike, second.
Second.
I'm sorry, for a second. People. All in favor? Mark, sorry, questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Excellent, so there was a cooperation agreement with SARANAC, I'm just interested to know, like, how does that come about?
Yeah.
Why is that a benefit to us?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, good question. A few meetings before, I was actually hired, the Board of Education uh passed a resolution to no longer accept out-of-district students, number of reasons, they're all good reasons, really. At the end of the day, there was a lot of kids that were in our, that were, we were educating, we weren't receiving taxpayer monies for them. And they may say that they were paying tuition, that they wouldn't pay tuition, it's awful hard. We're gonna kick the student out of school because mom and dad can't afford the tuition. So the board made a change. Um and then um a couple of years after that, um we had, we had, always had a really good special ed programming. And there were some uh outside entities that wanted to send their students to Beatty Town and not someplace else. And we couldn't allow that. So we passed uh, I don't know, that policy, the uh non-resident policy, we put in that you could attend Beatty Town if you had a shared service agreement with the school district. So so that's the agreement that we just passed. And that's with a student from SARANAC who SARANAC is willing to pay, compensate us with a shared service agreement, uh it's a relatively significant amount of money, um to send their student here to Beatty Town to be educated. So if an out-of-district, we've had before from Northeastern and maybe Shazee, I know Shazee has a student here, um again, because they, we could service their kids and I guess everybody involved, they said it might be a better placement.
Is there some algorithm used to determine the cost?
Well, it used to be Leans Calculator, now it's College Calculator. Now, the reality of was, it's uh, we took a look at what most students was charging for those kids and we wanted to provide, um we always want to provide the best programming. So uh we want to provide the best, the absolute best programming, which our kids receive. And so they become our kid. And we wanted to do it at a little bit of an economic benefit to the districts, but it's certainly an economic benefit to us. Uh because that, there also has to be space available. So if it wasn't, uh if we, if it was like an eight-one-one class and we couldn't receive a variance and that student might have to leave the 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 district, so. That's basically the way it works, right? Just a little bit less, and actually, one of them now, a couple of the programs, we're the only one that offers them, I think, even a couple of, one or two of the programs have closed over the CPS, so.
It's very, budget-wise, philosophically, there's always the approach to inclusion is only that, trying to keep it in this role. We're a large enough district that our overhead is capable of doing some things. Obviously, some of it we can, um but if we can, it's in the best interest of our students.
No answer?
Yes. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policy, may I have a motion please?
Motion.
Thank you, Crystal, second.
I'll start.
Mike, any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes.
Yep.
May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfers and confirmed tax rules and authorized tax levy be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion please?
A motion.
Thank you, Mike, second.
I'll start.
Thank you, Crystal. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing that we have questions, do we, could we please have a roll call vote? Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Haggardorn?
Yes.
Ed Merron?
Yes.
Christopher Misho? Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupore?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Colleen Stone. Colleen Stone. Additional items to discuss? Do you want to start, Mr. Max, with religious exemption to vaccination?
Yeah, there's been a number of laws that have been passed that impacted school districts, some positively, some negatively. One, it depends on your perspective, is the religious exemption to vaccinations, which no longer exists. Prior, you could, maybe you had a religious exemption and you obviously didn't need to be vaccinated, now you do. So we have a number, a small number of students that we had to address at each school and let them know that they need to be vaccinated or they couldn't come to school. Not because of, we decided that, not even because the state education decided that, it's because it's a lot of land in your state that we're responsible for. Built. A lot of those parents were very, very angry, some in the district, a lot throughout the state. And they stormed the state education department before complaining to the commissioner. But don't say it in matter, it's the law, she can't, she can't waive it, the law. So there's a misunderstanding of, you know, it's happening at school, but it's not because we're deciding it to happen. But we do have a parent or two that wants us to fight on her behalf not to have the vaccination requirement and to have some type of waiver approved by the legislature. You may have seen the emails, and you've seen the emails I've forwarded to you trying to get you informed. I'm not in support of that, I'm in support of having vaccinations. I know, you know, I have four, four kids and I know it's a tough decision. And we worry about the mercury in vaccinations and the information that's out there that's pro and con. But at the end of the day, kids were getting sick and I don't know if anybody died, but the kids were getting measles this year in a lot of school districts because of the unvaccinated kids. We certainly don't want that outbreak. Because if you, even if you're vaccinated and you're highly exposed to somebody, you can, you can receive these illnesses. So I wanted to raise the board's attention, I know we have community members that have reached out, but I, I will do the work of the board. But I wanted to do my position and why and, and how we got there.
I have a question, what happens to those students cannot, again, it's a small number, but if they choose not to be vaccinated?
Yeah.
What is the district's responsibility to educating those students?
Yeah, so that's another thing is, that, the, one particular parent who's reached out would like to then homeschool, really, you're one option is to homeschool your student. But they would like all the, all the access to everything that we have here at Beattie Town and have it at home, homeschool, we don't offer that. And I would recommend not to because we have a number of parents who decide to homeschool. Maybe they're for vaccination reasons, but I think they're for a lot of other reasons. And that's a tough decision too. But we can give them, and we, even if we wanted, I guess if we, what the board wanted to, you could buy their textbooks and buy their Chromebooks and give them X, Y, you, you might be able to do that. But the Q and A that's out for this particular situation is, these kids don't, can't have access to coming in and taking a regis exam. Right, they, they, there's things that we could allow for some students who have vaccinations that we can't allow for those that don't. So one of the questions that this particular parent asks, and I, and I say this because it doesn't matter if it's her or somebody else, is can they go to the basketball, can they go to a basketball game? Well, we don't check, you know, people's vaccination records to go into a game, it's a really good question. And I might pose it back to the Q and A portal and, and try to get an answer on that because it really is a public health concern when you think about it. We're not trying to be punitive, but I also want to make sure that we're not allowing, and see that people go, oh, that was downstate. Well, Park Safari had measles outbreak because of that, which is fifteen miles down the road, it's four miles down the road. I mean, we're trying to, more colleges. Colleges have been shut down for different reasons, you know. So there's not, the, we've, went over the Q and A at ATM and really the state is saying, all those parents are asking, well, can the district do this? Can the district do this, can the district do this? Which we may have the right to do for other people who are homeschool. But there's a lot of no's, they can't be transported on buses to Catholic schools or schools that might take them. So it's not, there's not a lot we, we could do. We don't, as a practice, provide the hotspots or Chromebooks or textbooks to our homeschool students. If you decide to homeschool because you disagree with the school, for whatever reason, you don't, we don't allow you to pick different components that you do agree with.
Can we get that for kids?
No, they have to, they, they submit to our homeschool coordinator what they are doing for their students. There's an accountability there, but we don't have a lot of say in saying that's not enough. We don't, we don't have a lot of say in it. So there's a certain freedom, there's a huge freedom when you decide to homeschool your student. But with that comes, you know, the responsibility to do that on your own. That's what it stands right now. The district, the board could revisit this and have a discussion and think otherwise, and we would.
What's the, what's the percentage of?
That's a good question. What do you think the percentage, you think it's less than one percent? What's the percentage of homeschool students? So we have two thousand students in our district, you think it's twenty or forty? Pro- approximately twenty four students, twenty four students is one percent. One point four percent, I guess. A lot of times, no, sometimes it's for religious reasons, sometimes it's just educational reasons. Sometimes you see a student who's getting in a lot of trouble and they'll just homeschool. Sometimes kids go, they homeschool for, for a little while and they show back up, right? So, different reasons. Oh, so next, uh.
Like pilots?
Yeah, pilots. So pilots are payments in lieu of taxes. Has anybody been reading what's happening in the Plasford City School District? The virus home is in today's paper. They, they were, Plasford City School District was opposed to a pilot with a virus home. The virus, is there any familiar with the virus home, virus homes, uh?
Intermittent.
Oh, yeah, maybe, yeah. So, so apparently, the, there was a, the virus homeowners wanted to sell the virus home and get, maybe move away from that business. And somebody said, I'll buy this if I can have a reduction in my taxes. And everybody might think intuitively, that doesn't really impact me. Okay, fine, you could pay less in taxes, maybe it helps your, maybe it definitely helps your businesses bottom line. But what people don't realize, what people don't realize is when you have a school budget, you pass a school budget, you're saying that all the taxpayers who pay taxes are gonna pay that amount of, and they're gonna.
They're gonna compensate.
They're gonna compensate the district, and that's where we came up with that number seventeen ninety one, right? Including in that number for us, seventeen ninety one, are a number of pilots. And that means that the Warren Buffets of the world who owns property right here in our district, who's, I think, the richest man, who are only one of the top two or three. And others do not pay their fair share. You know who does pay their, their share, huh? Just your share. You know who's paying Warren Buffett's share?
We are.
Everyone of us who's paying taxes in our district. That's bothersome to me as somebody who, as, as somebody who guides the board of education, I want you to realize that I think the greatest tax rate is building a business in Beattie Town because our rate is significantly lower than Peru, SARANAC, the city of Plasford. But if we keep allowing these pilots, you are gonna have a lot of entities that just aren't paying taxes. And, and it's never, it's never an incentive to us, it's always an incentive to their business. So one of the folks who's, was scheduled to be here at seven o'clock and they're not here, they wanted a pilot for the Holiday Inn. Now, this isn't the virus home, you can say it's great, good to the community, no new jobs. The, the Holiday Inn, they want to buy what's the date, which is now the days in, and turn it into the Holiday Inn, expand it, and they want, they're, they received a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. They received a massive reduction in their taxes. But for, what's the greater good to the community? There's not gonna be a number of new jobs. There's not gonna be an offset of individuals who, you know, can't find a home elsewhere. This is, this is a hotel that's changing names, like all hotels.
So who decides this, is that, is it the town board?
Yeah, that's a good, this, yeah, so it's, it is.
That's the complicated part.
That's the complicated part, so you have a, the town doesn't generally fight these because they don't have a town. They tax in different ways, they don't have a traditional town land tax, the way we need to take that tax, right? So they don't, they're not impacted. So they can say, I support that commodity business because it's, they're not really losing money. But everybody in the, in the Beattie Town Central School District and in the SARANAC Central School District, look at the group, you are, you are losing, you're losing money in that entity's in your district. It always happened to be in the Beattie Town district as far as, seems like to me. Although now the, the city of Plasford is sharing her pain, right? So that's a particular, that's a pilot. The other one was, like I said, the Falcon Seaboard, they, they received, they didn't have a pilot, they didn't have a pilot. I, I can't remember if this was a pilot or a tax.
It's a pilot.
It's a pilot, right?
Yeah.
So that's, again, that's a Warren Buffett company. The Koch Brothers who are in the, they own Georgia Pacific and land in our, in our school district are, again, two of the richest people in the world. They don't, they don't land in our district, and guess what they need? They need a tax break, right? Right, is this laughable to you? So that, that means that they're not paying taxes on their parcels and you're covering that cost. So the board of education passed a resolution that, that I brought to the table about six years ago, saying that we were opposed to pilots. And I want to come back to you, the board has changed, it's a different board now, saying, where, where do you stand? You, should we be aggressively advocating and fighting these pilots and letting, letting our community know that while we're not opposed to development in the town of Plasford, we want development, we want jobs in the town of Plasford, well, do we want that at the expense of everybody paying their fair share of taxes? Or do we think it makes sense to have, then maybe have fifteen, twenty or thirty years of paying reduced amount of taxes or no taxes?
And if I, if I can add, not only does it hurt individually, our tax, our levy limit, it really hurts your tax calculation when you're, tax cap calculation, when you're figuring that, when you increase your pilots, your tax cap calculation gets reduced dramatically because it's slow, so it, it hurts, it hurts the schools on two different ends.
Again, I'll give you one other, this is a way that actually can work in our benefit though. And I'm sure the town has some of these agreements. If somebody was, if an entity, a development corporation, was to give a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, we could say we're not gonna support that unless we have a community host agreement. Now, this is, this is a double edged sword. So the community host agreement is that that company would pay the district a set amount, like a pilot. So they, they know their bottom line on payments every year. The taxpayers still cover their end, but the district at least isn't losing money because of, because of.
Because it's not, if it's not considered a pilot, we, we don't have to.
There may be a small, well, you're right, I mean, I, this is a mixed league. It's up, the pilots aren't supposed to work the way that they have been used in the league. When, when I came from California in nine nine, it was an incentive for EST degree technology to be basically pulled out. And the way they did it was, you got a certain amount of money, but you had to, it was, it was based on the money, it was easy to profit. So you meet certain targets, the state can use this money, right? And so it was, it was measurable. So the way a pilot is supposed to work if this community does it right is, let's say you have this lot that's empty and it costs, it costs X, so you're not getting much for it. The company says, look, I'll buy that, I'll build something out of it, give me a pilot. You'll still get more than you would have gotten anyway, but give me a break so that I can build a business. But that's a way that makes sense because it brings in people that work there, that will live there and the, and the community doesn't lose on, on the dollars. Because they wouldn't have gotten that money anyway, they just get the same amount of profit. But the way they're doing it now is, it's an existing company, there's a certain tax base, now we're reducing our tax base?
Yeah.
That, that part just, it's just, it's like a, it's a scheme.
Means that a loophole. It's, it's, well, so you, you could, it would be very aggressive to fight this, but the boss will be setting, setting the tone. County doesn't like us fighting because, again, they love the businesses coming in, they don't have, they have a very small, small tax. And the town, you know, likes it, if you look at their website, they have, you don't see schools and kids and libraries on their website, you see Fox Source, which you see on their, on their website. Their, the Clinton County Industrial Development Agency is, is what really drives these pilots. And if you look at the last page of their uniform tax exempt policy, they have, they have, this is their policy now. So we have policies, you expect us to follow policies, right? Administration makes sure our policies are followed as do I. The last page of theirs is a grid, a rule grid, on how you develop points to see whether you are eligible for a pilot. We put this in the rule, this is a, so I always look at the grid and I say, I say, well, okay, you, you need six points. Show me how you're getting your six points, they never get the points. They never get the points because the points are, you're bringing in jobs, you bring in one hundred to three hundred jobs to the community or three hundred jobs to the community. Or, there's, there's just a bunch of criteria on here on how you get points. They never meet it, and they say to me, wow, it's just a standard deviation from the policy.
So, so Clinton County Development, he's just his leg, you know, it's basically.
Yes.
Their turn, their turn.
And, and the taxpayers don't know this, they don't understand, this is very complicated, some do, sorry. But a lot don't, they don't understand this. And it's not, it's not a big battle. I give Plasford City School District credit for fighting this fight that we started fighting six years ago, I'm guessing the paper. But they allow this to happen, and I gotta tell you, before they would allow it to happen, I mean, I could actually see where they were going. And a couple of times, we've had entities that were willing to make us whole. There's one right now that wants to build a solar plant, well, there's no new jobs in the solar plant, right? They don't want to pay taxes on the energy they're making, they don't want to pay taxes on the land they're using. But they will give us a community host agreement and say, maybe they're gonna give us a making up a number of that, twenty five thousand dollars a year. But they're not paying taxes anymore. But the, thus, the new director of the IDA officer is allowing a lot of pilots to go through that have no, that, that don't conform at all with this policy. Again, when I see that Holiday Inn, I see a hotel that's putting a small addition on, is receiving a pilot in our school district, they're not gonna pay the taxes that we're being paid. That doesn't make any sense, that doesn't pass any sniff test, other than they can do it until somebody stops them. You're gonna keep, I think they're gonna keep doing it.
Can you comment, wasn't it North or, or was it another company that was trying to make us whole with pilot?
Yeah, so not, wasn't it North, and North and Power, that was all given to him, that was given, that property was given to him by Governor Cuomo.
Was it Ramon Power?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's in energy?
It's a green line, Ramon Green Line company, they were gonna absolutely make us whole, they worked very closely with Mary Blaine, Eric Bell, myself. And they were going to compensate us about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. For a small plant, no, maybe one person working. But the amount of energy that they were going to gather and pump down to Connecticut was phenomenal. So, but that didn't happen.
But it never happened.
They never won, they didn't win the bid, that was all contingent on them winning the, the bid in Connecticut.
And it happened, and we fought, Champagne Senator, Paul, and, and we lost that basically, where there was a conflict.
Yeah, that was, that was, they had a tax cert where they fought their tax assessment.
Right.
We fought that and we lost it, so now their tax assessment in the Hall is, is really low and is based on, when Sears closed, then it's when they, right? They're doing it right now over, because Kmart's closed, the other side, and they're ready to, you know, once Sears closed, once they won the court case, it's all the hobby lobby, right?
Right.
Right, so they're all, yes, they're not gonna.
They're not really abandoned or vacant buildings, they were just in transition.
So you know Runnings is going in, but they have this, you know, court proceeding with us, for tax cert. So we have, we give that to an attorney who tells us how, what's our liability. So there's some times, we, one year, we put aside eight hundred thousand dollars, had to go aside to fight these tax certs, eight hundred thousand dollars, which would have otherwise been in our, in our budget.
But that's different than pilots.
The tax certs are different than the pilots, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it's a little bit.
The pilots just come off our, our, the mountain just comes off the levy and everybody raises it for everybody else. Where the tax certs come off the levy, um, but, but while it's in battle, it's in court battle because we. And but but while it's in battle, it's a part of battle because we might have to pay back taxes. We have to put, put a portion of our budget aside.
One is a lawsuit, one is an agreement. I mean, that's really what it is.
Just, just my question is, uh, do we have any companies who are, have pilots who are making us whole at this point? We don't, and how many pilots do we have total?
I just got the report from Anna from the county. I want, there's five or six. It's on, I can't remember exactly, it was five or six, but.
Five or six. I don't think we have anybody who's making, nobody who's making us whole.
No.
Wanted to be recently reached out. And is willing to talk, but if they, I don't know. They may just find out that they're gonna get supported anyways and and receive a pilot and not make us whole.
Is our only recourse is one?
So I would defer to Brendan Owens from the Stafford Owens firm. But reality is, you were familiar with an article, right? Familiar with that, which is, which is, did they make the right administrative decision that they could legally make? And if they're not following their policy, we could battle it or it's, and and it may even be one of those fights you fight. Even if you know you're gonna lose, that would be a decision for the Board of Education. I don't know whether we could win those, but that, because you're challenging the administrative decision of the I D, I D A. Not I D E A, I would say I D E A, because that's an education law. The I D A, like Cali, Industrial Development Agency.
It seems like if they're not following their policy, we would win, but it doesn't.
Well, I'll ask again. It's been a couple of years since we had those discussions. But my ultimate, my question is, do we, how do you feel about it? I don't wanna start going down a road and there is, why are we wasting our time here? Why, you know, we we like development in our, I understand that we like development in in the Beacon Town Central School District, the town, Plattsburgh. We like seeing new businesses moving in. I do, I like it. But I don't like it when I know that they're not paying taxes. I really don't.
Well, it's different if it's a new business.
It's a new business.
Versus a, a building, you won't be from one building to another and asking for a huge tax.
Different ownership, I guess.
Yeah, but that is not, that's exactly what you said. It was not meant to be that way. It was meant to bring in big business that was on a vacant lot that you were getting nothing on anyway.
Right.
That's what it was meant to do, encourage development, encourage development.
Yes.
Whenever I hear pilot, I always ask myself a question. The question is, how, how does giving this business a pilot improve the quality of education? The students and the program or our district? And if there is no improvement, I'm usually against it.
And that's the only way you would, you could justify in my mind, the community host agreement. Because you're still asking every taxpayer to pay three cents more per thousand or whatever it is. But if they're paying in X amount and it's going into our education system, you know, you can justify that that company's agreement does work for that purpose. What, I'm just asking for the temperature. Is this something that we keep, we keep battling? Or is this something we bring in individual pilots to you guys to look at? How do, how do you want myself, Janet, to receive?
I personally feel that we have an obligation to, of course, some taxpayers that we need to protect them. And that we need to investigate every pilot and like the ones that do not benefit our taxpayers or students.
I agree that we need to look at each individual pilot and if, like you said, it's a new business or someone who needs their policy, then.
Sure.
So be it. I know the Holiday Inn.
I guess the, about the Plattsburgh City School District is just interesting to also, it's just like a community awareness now. Is this a good, I guess this is a good time to bring it up because of our school districts are feeling prepared.
Yeah, so we sent Jay LeBron on the resolution that this board passed a number of years ago. I think that resolution's in the portal as well. Thought about maybe passing it again, maybe slightly modifying it or passing it again. But it may be the time when we, when we finally have a partner saying, hey, this hurts our tax base. This hurts our, this hurts our, our students. Is anybody opposed to us moving forward in continuing our, our approach? To keep you informed on?
I think education to the public and exposing the industrial development agency as what they're doing. I don't know what that is, if one or two of you have, they're partnering with Plattsburgh and say, look, your taxpayer, you know. It's a broad tax base, but a smaller rural, you know, it's overall being verified. Let's hold these agencies accountable for what they're doing, what they're allowing these big corporations to do.
Yeah. So we finally get in it, we see the, the value within the policy, that's one thing. But when it's just when they're really deviating and it seems like it's just a tax break and that there's no benefit to the community. We're gonna go, we're gonna bring back to you, but we're gonna tell you what our expectations are there.
Great. I want to remind everyone that we have, our board retreat is on the twenty seventh of this month, next meeting day. At five thirty at the Butcher Block. Anything else? I did send everybody a message, okay? So, yes, I did send out our reminder. So hopefully, it seems like there's a good response. Uh, did you want to talk about?
Yeah, a couple real quick. So, um, several times, a couple times a year, we have a area of six, right? We have about twelve areas in the near state, or new school boards, regions, or is there a six? And we had a meeting. And that was one, it covered different subs. This one was strongly based on encouraging more participation on our side with legislation. So having us, we're involved in waves on, pilots going after our legislative bodies to address things like, we just talked about the idea of great things. Things that we can do to help change law that encourages, uh, towards better function for the school districts. That's about it. Real quick, I also want to cover, the three of us attended the summer law conference this summer. Yeah, has any questions? I think some information's on the portal. It's really great because it covers all the new laws that have been coming through that affect everybody over there. Which is gonna need everything from new laws to new court cases, how they're ruled. One of the components that I, that they did cover, the changes, the improvements to participate with mental health and social abuse. How that's been implemented, reflected in the district. The other one that was interesting was digital, digital changes. So similar to how we do audit committee analysis, there is a wave coming. Including the digital component to how digital I T is addressed in schools, right? So in fact, just a few weeks ago, there was a big issue with ransomware in school districts around the state, right? So as part of this whole new world, it's important to be aware that digital audits based on the national system standards is, is coming down the line. And so we're looking to be in the lead of coming like we do with everybody else and be a part of it. If you guys want to add anything to that.
Yeah, this is new law. It's called two D. And it requires us to audit, make sure that your students' information is safe. And and then, and how we protect, what, how do we protect our infrastructure and make sure there's no infiltration? It's, it's rigorous, it's, it's.
Great. We have set aside ten minutes for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the board at this time, I ask that you please approach the board and state your name. Seeing that there is no one at this time. We will move to appointing a clerk pro tem. May be resolved that the Board of Education appoint. Ed Merron as clerk pro tem may have a motion, please.
A motion.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Uh, no abstains. Thank you, Ed Merron for being our clerk pro tem.
Yes, you, yes, it does.
Okay.
And we also need to go into this particular reason.
Alright, so I'm gonna run that statement. It may be resolved that the Board of Education entered into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons. In a form relating, and information relating to current or future investigation or prosecution of a criminal offense. That would, that would impair, impair or affect his law enforcement if disclosed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mark. Second? Thank you, Mike. All, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No abstains. They'll be going into executive session. We will take just a few minutes before we go.